Is your taxes not on? In the sitting room.
Mr. Trillo, you want to lead us in our pledge?
Check one, two, check, check.
Lewis?
Hi.
You work out cover ready? We're just waiting on Mr. Lewis, right? Good evening, everyone. We've got to go ahead and get started with our meeting. If you would rise. Mr. Trillo is going to lead us in our pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual who liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Patrick?
President.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Trejo?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Here.
Chairman Springs?
Here. Any communications from staff?
Yes, Chairman. Just would like to note that we have a revised agenda set forth before you and also posted online with some minor edits to the first paragraph and the access code for tonight's meeting. And we have a revised resolution for item 5C that the planner will describe the minor changes to during her presentation. That is all.
Ladies and gentlemen, to ask a question or add a comment, press pound two. No questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please.
Agenda item 5A, a public hearing to consider an application by Shoma Hospitality LLC for special use permit number 2020004 SP 202004 to allow, one, the onset consumption of beer and wine and distilled spirits; two, outdoor dining; and three, outdoor live entertainment within a hotel, hotel restaurant, and hotel pool lounge on an approximately 86,102 square foot M1L limited manufacturing zoned property at 3900 West Century Boulevard.
Chairman Springs and Commission, the file is present and notice has been given in the form and manner as required by law. Staff received no correspondence from the public on this item and Planner Arturo Salazar is present to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the Commission. On November 1st, 2018, staff approved site plan review number 2018025 to allow interior and interior alterations to the existing hotel. In July 2019, after completing site plan review, the applicant pulled permits to start interior and exterior modifications on the existing three-story hotel building with associated parking lot improvements. The subject site is located on the south side of Century Boulevard. The properties to the south and east are zoned M1L and are developed with commercial uses. The property to the west is zone C2A, is vacant, and is part of the Clippers Arena site. Directly north of the site is the Hollywood Park Tomorrow Development. The site is developed with an approximately 68,000 three-story hotel. The hotel does not currently have an active business license. Parking for the hotel will be onsite. Access to the subject site will be via an existing 28-foot one-way circular driveway and an existing 28-foot two-way driveway off of Century Boulevard. Guests can access the parking via the two driveways. Pedestrian access to the subject site is via the main entrance off Century Boulevard. The 5,400-square-foot three-story restaurant and bar lounge under construction will be located at the northeastern corner of the hotel within a portion of the first and second floors, as well as a roof deck, and will include approximately 1,200 square feet of dining lounge area, a bar, kitchen, and restrooms on the first floor; 2,300 square feet of dining lounge area, a bar and restrooms on the second floor; and a 1,300-square-foot area on the third-floor roof deck with a dining lounge area, a bar, and restrooms. The restaurant and bar lounge, restaurant roof deck and outdoor pool area will provide a full menu that includes a variety of appetizers, soups, salads, entrees, and desserts. The restaurant and outdoor pool lounge bar will have a total of three shifts throughout the business day with a total of 16 employees per shift. The hours of operation for the restaurant and bar lounge, restaurant roof deck, and outdoor pool lounge bar will be 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM daily. The full menu will be available throughout these hours. The sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for onsite consumption is proposed to occur in the proposed restaurant and bar lounge, including the restaurant roof deck, the outdoor pool lounge bar. Outdoor dining is proposed to occur in the 1,300-square-foot restaurant roof deck and within an approximately 280-square-foot dining area by the outdoor pool lounge bar. The applicant proposes to allow onsite sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits exclusively for patrons of the restaurant and hotel in an effort to expand their beverage options to customers in addition to restaurant service. The proposed live entertainment will be comprised of an outdoor 20-square-foot area for live performers and disc jockeys, which will be located outdoors adjacent to the pool and spa area. The live entertainment is intended for enjoyment of hotel guests. The proposed hours of live entertainment are 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM. A condition has been included that the live entertainment should not be audible off-site. The applicant is also requesting that all hotel guest rooms have controlled access liquor cabinets. The subject site's census tract is not considered over-concentrated by ABC. Therefore, the planning commission is not required to make a public convenience or necessity finding. In the subject crime reporting district number I-30, the crime rate slightly decreased from 137 incidents in 2017 to 98 incidents in 2019. The subject site itself has had zero incidents from 2017 through 2019. The hotel will provide a total of 20 security cameras. Eight cameras are located on the exterior of the building and parking lot. The remaining 12 cameras are located inside the hotel. The cameras are monitored in real time. The proposed project is consistent with the land use element of the Inglewood General Plan. A catex has been prepared by staff stating that the proposed project is exempt. This concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and the applicant is also available for questions.
Thank you very much, Howard. We've got to open up some questions. We're going to start with Commissioner Rice.
We had two different, two areas where you talked about square footage, one being for the live entertainment.
Commissioner, just your mic.
You had two areas where you talked about the square footage. One being the live entertainment and disc jockey area with 20 square feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
It's like four foot by five foot?
It could be four by five, or it can be anything that totals 20 square feet.
So like two people could sit in there?
Correct.
There's another area that's 158 square foot, but it's a open-air lounge area. It's like a...
It's a bar area. It's the outdoor pool bar area, the 158 square feet. Correct.
The far west side of the building is constructed on the property line. Is that correct?
That's correct.
In the event that you had guests entertaining on the second, third floor on that section of the building, how does the fire department have access to be able to come in and invent there's a fire there?
Well, the live entertainment's on the first floor.
Not the live entertainment, for guests in general that were there.
Well, the restaurant is on the first, second, and roof deck. Fire department will have access through the main entrance ways, which is through the restaurant and through the main entrance through the lobby. Now, you can access the hotel on the east side on the driveway coming off, the straightaway driveway coming off of Century Boulevard that also has access to the exterior of the building that has access to the pool area.
On the west, because this property is built on the property line on the west side, would there be a restriction with someone constructing the property west of that to, that they have an easement there?
Well, per the municipal code, setbacks are not required for the commercial property.
Both can be on the property line?
Correct.
Okay. All right, next questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Patrick?
I just, for point of clarification, there will be three restaurants. You said the first, second, and rooftop level?
Well, there's one restaurant, and that restaurant occupies three floors, which is the first floor, second floor, and the roof deck. So it's a three-level restaurant.
A three-level restaurant, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Trillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The pool lounge building, is that open or is it enclosed?
The building is enclosed, however, it does have a roof deck on top of the pool lounge building.
Okay, so that's where the live entertainment?
No, the live entertainment will take place on the east side of the pool lounge area. And I can show you here.
Please.
So on the site plan, the live entertainment is highlighted in yellow. That's the area there, which is on the east side of the building, which is the east side of the pool lounge area. And just adjacent to it is the spa and the new pool, the pool lounge area, and the new pool lounge building, which is highlighted in the green.
Okay, so on the east side is where the live entertainment DJ would be?
Correct.
Okay. Now, the pool lounge area, again, it's enclosed but can be open to the pool?
The pool lounge area is open to, open to the air from the ground to the floor, to the sky, I'm sorry.
Now, I read in the report that said, "No alcohol to be served in the pool lounge building." Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. But can liquor be brought over, not served there, but can it be brought over from the bar area on the east side? Can it be brought over into, into the pool lounge building?
The, there's a condition in the resolution that states that alcohol will not be served on, in the pool lounge building nor on the roof deck.
Okay, but served and brought over are two different things. It's served in the bar area on the east side, and an individual that's in the pool lounge area gets up to go get a drink in the bar area, and he wants to take it to the pool lounge area. Is that going to be allowed?
Well, we can amend the condition to prohibit the applicant from taking alcohol beverages to the roof deck, if that...
Okay. Yeah, I think it should. I mean, because it seems like that's the intent.
Right.
But the way it's written, you know, people will, I think inevitably, bring something over to the pool lounge area.
Right.
And then, one more question that also relates to the pool lounge area. Page three of six. It says, "Live entertainment is intended for..." I guess it's the third paragraph from the bottom.
Uh huh.
"Live entertainment is intended for enjoyment of hotel guests and not for special events that bring non-hotel guests to the site." And then, condition number eight reads... The condition, or proposed condition number eight reads, "An event center or private events at the hotel more than four times per year is subject to approval of a special use permit."
That's, that's correct. So, the municipal code states that businesses can have special events up to four times a year without a special use permit. So therefore, it's a by right for four times per year, going through permits and licensee committee.
So if they get that, that permit, then non-hotel guests can, can enjoy the live entertainment?
Well, if, if they want to do more than four events per year, then they would have to come before you for a special use permit for an event center. And then, at that time, if they were to get approved, then they can, they can hold continuous event centers upon the approval of the planning commission.
Well, who, what is it, what is a special event and who enforces it? What is a special event?
Special events are typically birthday parties, weddings, get-togethers, that sort of events.
And if I have a family coming in that is staying, and they don't know anything about asking for a special event, and they decide, 10 families are going to come in because they're going to have a birthday party, and they didn't know anything about a special event, and they all go over to the live entertainment area, how is that enforced or affected? Or, it seems contradictory to me.
Typically, another factor in distinguishing a special event is that an area or a portion of the hotel is closed off specifically for a particular group. It's not open to the public during that time, or it's not open to hotel guests. So, in that case, if a group of hotel guests were coming together for dinner or meeting up in the pool area, that wouldn't be considered a special event?
Okay, so it's like sectioning off an area for a special event is really what differentiates...
Yes, and bringing in non-hotel guests.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Yes, good evening. I have two questions. It's related to non-guests as well. How are you going to control non-guests attending special events or coming in to enjoy the live entertainment or the DJ? How is that going to be implemented with regards to knowing who's actually a guest and a non-guest?
That question, the applicant for daily operations and procedures, the applicant can answer that question.
Okay. And drinks? Is there a maximum drink limit that you're going to allow your guests to have?
Again, that question can be answered by the applicant. The municipal code doesn't limit the number of drinks that can be served. So that will be a question that the applicant can answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good report. My, I have a couple of questions. One of my questions is in regards to, you had indicated that the, the hotel does not have a permit to run as a hotel.
It, it does not have an active business license as of today.
Business license. But we're going to allow them, we're here to approve a special use permit for beer, wine, and alcohol, but we don't have a business license?
Well, typically, a business license is obtained when they receive a certificate of occupancy or when the job is actually done.
And my next question has to do with, you indicated that they want, special use permit would entail having alcohol in the rooms, like a little bar area. So, on one of the slides, you had indicated that there's a, that one right there, the one before. Come back. One more. That one. Rooms are right there, so if we're going to come out into the pool area, can we, are we allowed to bring that alcohol out of our rooms into the pool area? What would prevent them from doing that?
There's, the Inglewood Municipal Code does not restrict someone from taking alcohol from their room into the pool lounge area. So that would be a restriction that will be enforced by the hotel management, and the applicant can answer that question.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Okay, if the applicant is, thank you. Any more questions for our Commissioner? Commissioner Patrick? Commissioner Rice?
None.
Commissioner Trillo?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Very good. If the applicant is here, if you can, if we can see you, or give us your name, and you can tell us about your particular project?
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Tari Kubengwa. I'm here from SB Designing Consulting.
Your line is now muted.
...application. Also here is the applicant, Jimmy Shoma. So I wanted to give you a little quick background, and then I can address your questions, and if I miss anything, we're happy to elaborate. So the applicants are brothers, Jonathan and Jimmy Shoma, who are members of an experienced development team. They have a diverse portfolio of projects that have often involved the considerable rehabilitation of the subject property. They collectively possess ample experience in the real estate space with an appreciation for rental development and elevating existing properties that positively contribute to and becomes a recognizable part of the local community. And they understand that self-policing is critical to operating a successful business, but also one that is a positive asset. So with that, let me go into your questions. You had a question about restricting access in the pool area to non-guests and guests. So, I had a little, some details about how that will work. So take, for instance, where the pool spa area is, if you're looking at the floor plan or site plan that Arturo had pulled up previously that had the pool area outlined in green. So, basically, like the pool area itself would be more restricted. There would likely be a way to restrict it so that guests can only have access, say, like with a key card or a fob. Let's say like the pool side service center bar, to be active by anyone that's also coming to visit the restaurant. But they're going to have full-time security staff at the restaurant. As Arturo mentioned, they're also going to have security cameras present, and also staff and management will be policing the restaurant and hotel areas, and just looking out for any type of behavior that would potentially cause a nuisance. But, yeah, and in terms of your concerns about a drink maximum and over-serving, that's definitely a legitimate concern. Their staff is going to go through training with the state for responsible beverage service. The agency has a couple of options for that. If there's any local program that the police department has, they'd also complete that program. And it just trains you how to responsibly serve, they usually act like an identification device to check IDs, to just make sure that you also look for signs of what an intoxicated person looks like, that you know, different ways to make sure you don't over-serve someone. But there isn't going to be like a drink minimum in order to, you know, patronize the restaurant or the outdoor dining areas. It's not a club or a lounge or anything like that. And then, I know you had another question about the access room cabinets. So essentially, when you go through this process, if you're doing a hotel, obviously the base ABC licenses for a restaurant at a hotel with the type 47, once you are seeking that, you're allowed to apply for basically like a sub-license, which is for the in-room cabinets for the hotel rooms. And so basically, ABC licenses the entire hotel premises, and so consumption is permitted throughout the property, but obviously, there will be staff monitoring, and there will be present to make sure that people aren't, you know, engaging in activities that could cause a nuisance, you know, in the property or on the adjacent sidewalks. But there isn't necessarily a restriction in terms of ABC about removing something from your room to drink and taking it, say, out to the pool lounge and a cup or a glass, because the whole licenses premise, the whole premises is going to be licensed. So consumption is permissible and legal on the restaurant, on the hotel property. Are there any other questions or certifications about the...
Are you finished with your presentation? And could we get your name one more time?
Your line is now unmuted.
Did you get the name? Uh, can you give us your name again?
Do you need me to repeat my name?
No, we did not get your name.
Okay, it's Tari, T-A-R-I. My last name is Kubengwa. It's K-U-B as in Victor, H-E-N-G-U-H-W-A.
And how are you related to the, the applicant?
I'm a representative for the applicant, so I'll just be giving the response.
Is the applicant with...
Jimmy is there, yes.
Is the applicant available?
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I'm present. This is Jimmy Shoma.
This is Jimmy Shoma.
All right. I'm sure your representative answered a lot of the questions, but our main issue is to tell us, we want you to tell us about your project and tell us how this project will be able to benefit the Inglewood community.
Well, first, the project is, what we are doing is renovating an older hotel built in the 60s and creating it a nicer location to benefit residents and guests, the people coming into the Inglewood city, places for family and other people to stay. Also, as there's development in the area, it can benefit the whole increase of Inglewood and everything that's happening.
Okay.
The hotel could essentially create a central hub for the community to come and resort to and stay at for the arena, for the stadium, for the casino, as there's no other hotels that have been signed yet in the area.
Okay. Did you get the name, Madam Secretary? We're going to open up some questioning for you, sir. And we're going to start off with some questions for you. We're going to start off with one of our commissioners, Commissioner Patrick.
Good afternoon. I have questions about your parking. I know in 1975, the parking was reduced from 182 to 66 spaces. On page five, you're now saying the hotel requires 96 parking spaces. Will all of the, it's going to be a 25, a 28-foot one-way circular driveway and a 28-foot two-way driveway. Could you please show me where this parking will be, and will it all be together? Will all of the 96 spots be in front of the hotel, or will there be half in front along with the van-accessible parking spaces and some in the back? I don't quite understand where your parking spaces are.
Well, if you pull up the site plan that Arturo presented earlier, you can see, I believe, it's about 15 to 20 spaces directly in front of the hotel where the one-way circular driveway will be. And then, there's another driveway that allows you to pull in, which is the two-way driveway that wraps around the entire property of the hotel. So it's a two-way with parking on each side of the driveway, with cars aimed against the building and against the property line of the building, which wraps the both buildings of the hotel.
So the entrance to the parking area will be going east on Century? Access to the parking area? West? It's going to have to go east.
The entry will be off of Century.
I'm sorry?
Hi, this is Tari again. So I can help explain. So basically, there's a circular driveway when you first enter off Century that has about 11 spaces. If you were to look at the site plan with your sheet A 2.0, and then there's a two-way driveway on the other side of the building that has the remaining majority of the spaces. And the parking spaces wrap around the left side of the property, if you're looking at the plan, around to the back, like in an L shape.
So entrance will be off of Century Boulevard?
Yes, the main ingress and egress of the property are off Century only.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes. Question. The bar is not exclusively for hotel guests. It's an open bar for the general public, correct?
Yes, there's the outdoor service counters that are thrown within the wholly enclosed restaurant areas, both the outdoor dining areas, could be visited by patrons who are hotel guests or are not. But that's just like a regular restaurant, like.
I couldn't quite understand you, but I think that was a yes. That's open to the public, right?
Yes, just like a regular restaurant.
And like a regular bar? Also.
Yeah, I mean, it is a restaurant, but yes, they have bar service counters where drinks would be dispensed.
So based on your hours of serving alcohol, if a guest were to arrive there at 1:00 a.m. and had three drinks at 2:00 a.m., they could literally be impaired to 3, 4 o'clock in the morning?
Well, typically, you know, the ABC will require a last call so that, say, if someone came at 1:00, they could only be served until 1:30. And then they would not be allowed to be having drinks after that. But this is, you know, a hotel with a full service, a focused restaurant establishment. So focus is the food. The drinks are meant to be a complimentary ancillary amenity to the dining experience. So this isn't really a place where people are going to be coming just to drink, to drink. And staff is going to be looking out for people that are, you know, maybe had too much. They're going to learn how to look out for signs of someone who officially, like, runs toxic. But there'll also be security staff. There'll also be, you know, like, points of entry to the hotel. You can't just walk in off the street and not pass staff. So there will be controls and plays to make sure that, you know, the site is respectful to its neighbors, residential, non-residential, and to not become a nuisance. You know, they've put in a substantial investment into the property, and it's just not in their long-term interest to not be a succeed in part of a successful hotel and restaurant and just the business in general is being a respectful, responsible neighbor. And they wouldn't want to jeopardize their ABC license or their city entitlement.
Okay. I'm just concerned about the result of the scenario that I just gave you. And I'm accustomed to last call, too, and usually I recall it being around midnight. I'm just concerned with your performer now, how damaging would it be to your business to have the last call at midnight as opposed to 2:00 a.m.?
Well, I mean, it's technically up to the ABC's discretion at the state level to decide a last call time. You know, in terms of the city planning entitlements for the alcohol use, we ask for a range of hours so that, say,
I don't really want to remove and cut you off, but in the interest of time, I'm going to have to, because I think that's a business decision, not an ABC decision. ABC is going to give you a maximum. But if you're a business and you want to have your last call at midnight, I don't think ABC is going to insist you have it at 2:00 a.m.
No, I'm not saying ABC will insist, but it's more that, you know, the hours that we're requesting are standard for hotel, especially if you have an accompanying restaurant. It helps them to be competitive with comparable and similar sites in the area. So it's not, the hours that we're requesting are pretty standard and in line with other requests and other approvals.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trill?
I have a couple of questions on parking. Now, you have 98 parking spaces, and those, are they for the exclusive use of hotel guests? Or will restaurant patrons be using them also?
Sure, so the parking is obviously going to be available for hotel guests, but it's for the uses of the site. So that includes the restaurant, which, you know, can host people that aren't hotel guests. I can talk a little bit about, you know, parking and transportation. So as another commissioner had mentioned, you know, their parking stalls grandfathered in from the previous existing hotel use for the things that we're adding to the hotel, like two new hotel rooms and just some new floor areas, first, like storage and laundry room and further roof decks. And the increase in the restaurant size, we're meeting that total climate for those parking stalls based on the current code requirement. But in this time, you know, the use of ride-share and alternative modes to getting to establishments has decreased the need for onsite parking or is different than where it was, say, 10 years ago. Also, the property is near a couple of bus lines, that will aid in providing transportation and alternative modes for getting there that don't require parking with the staff, also other local visitors. But we do think that the parking is sufficient, and it's, you know, been going through the building department to be vetted and also planning a thing that we're, you know, providing parking per the code.
Okay.
And we're not asking for an exemption from parking.
Okay. One other question. It sort of goes back to no drinks allowed in the pool lounge area. That was the intent, right? That there be no drinks in the pool lounge area?
So with way that both condition 10, are we even looking at condition number? I think it's 10?
We didn't understand the answer to the question.
So, condition number 10?
Your line is now muted.
Of condition 10?
Your line is now unmuted.
So right now, it says, so basically, if you look at the floor plan on A 4.0, you see that there is, like, the pool lounge building, and then there's the service counter that has accompanying seating. That's the pool round. Condition 10 is talking about the roof deck above that, not that ground floor area where it's saying that staff shall not serve food or beverages. It's not considered outdoor dining. We understand we don't, you know, we're not parking to that. We don't meet that requirement. But we did, you know, want to discuss and bring up the possibility to, you know, just be prudent in that the reality is that, you know, we'd like, if someone had ordered a beverage, to be able to consume it on the roof deck, but it wouldn't be, you know, where staff would be coming up there and refilling them. And so, you know, but say if someone had started downstairs and just wanted to sit up there and finish consuming it, that that could be permitted.
Can somebody please translate what she just said? I didn't understand it.
Oh. Just want to, going back to Commissioner Trejo's question, the area where alcohol is not going to be served is on the roof deck of the pool lounge building. So no alcohol or food would be served up there.
That's correct.
I believe the applicant's representative was saying they would like the opportunity for someone who has gotten a drink or perhaps food at the bar or down around the pool lounge area, which is, the pool lounge area is the area on the ground level that surrounds the pool. That's the pool lounge area. They'd like the opportunity for the customers to be able to go up to the roof deck, which is just passive open space up there.
So that's where condition number 10 applies, right? I thought it was 8, but I think it's 10. Where it says that the hotel, restaurant, and/or employees shall not serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits, food and beverages on the roof deck of the pool lounge building.
That's correct.
So what they're saying, what the applicant is saying, and Terry, I'm sorry, because I can't pronounce your last name, so I'm going to use your first name. Terry, you're saying that you want people or patrons, whether they're hotel guests or otherwise, that you want them to have the ability to, if they purchased a drink and/or food, to come up to the pool, to the roof deck of the pool lounge building, right?
So to clarify, you know, we understand that there is a parking requirement associated with outdoor dining. So, you know, the ground floor area underneath the roof deck next to the pool is an outdoor dining space as well as the roof deck above the restaurant. We were just asking if patrons could be allowed to consume, say, like, a drink that they had already started and consume it on the roof deck. The way the condition's written now, it says staff can't access and serve up there, meaning, like, where staff can't, you know, go up there and bring people food and drinks, but say if someone had one and had charged downstairs and just wanted to go up, so guests could just see it and see the view that they'd be allowed to consume the drink that they had already started. We're wondering if there is flexibility to allow that.
So you want to change the rules?
And the opposite.
Pretty much.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you.
So you want to circumvent the rules that were already outlined in the conditions? Is that what you're saying to us?
We're not asking to circumvent. We're just asking, you know, what could be possible? I know the commissioner had brought up, you know, about what it brings, so we're also trying to understand what change would be.
We understand exactly what you're trying to do. We understand. We're going to move on with the rest of our questioning. Commissioner Trill?
Responsible serving. If there's no security guard on site, if there is a problem drinker, how would you handle that?
Hi, this is Tari. There is going to be security on site. Condition 14 requires two licensed security guards.
Okay, thank you. I missed that one.
Sorry.
Commissioner Shaw Williams, please?
Yes, thank you. You said, I'm looking at the security, and you indicate there's going to be 20 security cameras, eight of which are going to be located at the exterior of the building and the parking lot. How many cameras exactly are going to be in the parking lot? And part B of my question, will there be foot patrol in the parking lot as a safety measure for guests?
Hi, this is Tari. Yes, there will be security staff patrolling on foot all areas of the hotel, and there will also be staff throughout the property, say, in the restaurant and the outdoor dining areas, and then, like, the common areas of the hotel, like the lobby and such.
And how many cameras will be located in the parking lot?
Give me one second, I'm looking at the plan. Okay, so eight of the cameras are outside. I probably need a couple of minutes to give the staff member just to look at the, to kind of highlight them on the plan. Do you have any additional questions we can answer in the meantime?
I didn't understand what you said. I'm sorry.
Oh, I said there's, so there's, as the staff report said, there's going to be eight cameras on the outside of the building that also includes the parking lot. I need a couple of minutes to just look through the plans and highlight where they are exactly on the parking lot. But they are spaced substantially so that they can cover the areas. I mean, there's no, they don't have any interest in, say, having the parking lot be a dangerous area. And there will be security staff patrolling as well as regular restaurant staff.
I, this is the applicant, Jimmy Shoma. Can you hear me? In real, in actually what's being built, I have about, I'm adding more cameras than what's even shown on the plan. So just for the parking alone, and I'm doing the count off the top of my head, because I'm usually there every morning, I have about 10 cameras aimed at the parking around the building as well as six, or sorry, eight in front, 10 around the building. And I have about probably 40 or 50 cameras within the actual premises, within the building, within the pool area, within the pool lounge area, and all around, if that helps.
Commissioner Williams, if I may, you can condition the request for more cameras if you like. You do have the, to condition it for more cameras as you please.
He indicated, I'm sorry. You indicated there's going to be at least 40. Did I hear you correctly?
Okay, yes. I added a lot of cameras, and it's close to 35 to 40 cameras. It's funny, because I just had the conversation with my low-voltage contractor. It, it's funny, because I just had the conversation with my low voltage contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, are there any other questions from our commissioners? Commissioner Patrick? Commissioner Rice? Mr. Trejo? Commissioner Williams? Okay, thank you very much, sir, ma'am. At this time, we're gonna open it up for those who are in favor or not in favor of this particular project. You can come to, pick up your phone, and give us your name. Is there anyone on the line? Okay, we're gonna close this-
Ladies and gentlemen, everyone on, currently is unmuted. If you have a question or a comment, please go ahead and speak up and state your name.
Okay, hearing none, we're gonna close this segment. We're gonna ask for any final questions from our commissioners? Hearing none.
Oh, I have one final question.
Okay.
I just want to confirm, condition number 10, it says that the hotel restaurant and/or employee shall not serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits. They won't serve, but they can bring them there, from the restaurant and/or the, the bars and the lounge area, correct?
You can make one of that, one of your conditions in a motion. Commissioner Trejo?
Yes, I, I understand. I was just wanting to confirm that that's what-
Right.
The intent for number 10 is that you can't serve, but you can bring it over. And if we don't want it brought over, then-
You can condition it.
Mr. Chairman, then that's where we would condition it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no other questions? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion. I move to reaffirm category exemption EACE 2020-032 and adopted chapter resolution approving SP 2020-004 subject to 22 conditions as followed. On-site consumption of beer and wine and distilled spirits from the hotel and hotel restaurant. Outdoor dining from the restaurant roof deck and pool lounge. Outdoor live entertainment with hotel pool, within hotel pool lounge.
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Coffee, any co- Hold on.
I wa-
Hold on, Mr., Commissioner Rice. We had a motion, she's seconding your motion, so you wanna make a, I have a call for a question.
I hesitated, because I thought there may automatically be a one-year review with this. This is uncharted territory for us, and I don't see that there isn't my notes, so I'd like to also request we have a one-year review of this decision.
So you want to add to your motion?
Correct.
And are you going to affirm a second adding on?
I do, I second.
Okay, you heard the question, you heard the motion, it was a second. Is there any other questions to the motion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Patrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye.
Ms. Wilcox?
Yes, Chairman. According to the Inglewood Municipal Code, this decision can be appealed within 20 days from the notice of planning commission action by filing a written notification to the planning division and submitting an appeal fee of $529, at which time the file will be transmitted to the city council for their consideration.
Thank you. Okay, you've been approved, thank you very much. Move on to the next one, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Madam Secretary, I'm the chair. Talking to myself.
Item 5B, a public hearing to consider an application by Patrick Pernag, owner, for a special use permit number 2020005, SP 2020005, to subdivide a property into four condominium units on an approximately 7,500 square foot R3 multiple-family residential zone property at 334 East Stepney Street.
Chairman Springs and Commission, the file is present and notice has been given in the form and manner as required by law. Staff received no correspondence on this item from the public, and Planner Bernard McCrumby is present to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. The subject site is zoned R3 and is surrounded by residential uses. The applicant proposes to develop two detached, two-story townhome structures that will contain two three-bedroom units each. Each unit will have floor areas ranging from 1,180 square feet to 1,220 square feet, and will be comprised of a living room, dining room, kitchen, and half bath on the first floor, and three bedrooms and two bathrooms on the second floor. The site will provide two two-car garages and one single-car garage with an additional parking space provided on Stepney Street. The project requires a total of six parking spaces at a parking ratio of one and a half parking spaces per unit, with an allowance of one bedroom, one parking space, excuse me, to be located on the street per the Fairview Heights Transit Oriented Parking Development Standards. The primary entrance to the units will be located on the first level of the north-facing facade along Stepney Street. The entrance to the second unit will be located on the east-facing facade accessed via a walkway. The rear units will be accessed from, from a pedestrian walkway to the, to entries on the west and east side of the buildings. This is the floor plan of the rear unit. The proposed condominium units will be approximately 25 feet in height, and will have a Spanish architectural styled exterior with a pitch gable roof and finished with Spanish roof tiles. The applicant proposes a taupe-smooth stucco finish exterior with brown foam stucco window accents. The proposed project is in compliance with the prototype designs of the TOD, Fairview Heights, Design Guidelines, which falls in line with the single-family residence public frontage on the street. If the planning commission approves this request, the applicant will be required to submit plans for site plan review, and where staff will go into a deep dive and ensure compliance with IMC as well as other applicable agencies. It should also be noted that by subdividing this property into condominiums, each unit will be sold separately with the purchaser owning an individual unit and an equal share of the common area. Each unit, or each owner, will be a member of the homeowners association and responsible for the maintenance of the common areas, including driveways and the yards. As required, a tentative parcel map was filed in concurrence with this SUP application, and a copy of the CCNRs are gonna be required to be submitted as well, which contain the rules and regulations that stipulate how the homeowners association will be governed and maintained. This project is consistent with the land use element of the general plan and is categorically exempt from CEQA, and this concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Let's set up Commissioner Patrick.
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
I saw something rather unusual here when it listed one of the parking spaces on Stepney Street.
Yeah.
Explain how that works on a public street.
So, the TOD has, in its development of its design guidelines, allowed for parking for units that are, that have more than two bedrooms, to have an increased parking requirement of one and a half spaces per unit. In order to help the developers and provide some level of parking flexibility, one of those parking spaces was allowed to be parked directly adjacent to the development on the street. So for a single-family home or studio unit, the parking requirement would be one-to-one, basically a one-to-one ratio. So, and our general parking requirement is two parking spaces per unit. So, that's, that's a little bit of the, of a difference between what the TOD is allowing in regards to parking.
That's if off-street parking is available. If all those spaces are taken, you really don't have off-street parking unless it's designated for that building.
Well, ideally, it, it would be designated for, for the, the, the adjacent units.
So, so you will actually mark on the curves that this parking space is for this unit, for this building?
That's the-
I would just like to add, I know the space would not be designated specifically for the unit. The TOD plan reduced the parking requirements around the transit stations and contemplated some other parking scenarios that are not allowed elsewhere in the city because of the distance from the light rail, in an effort to just support some more walkable pedestrian-oriented area. So the TOD plan allows for, when there is curb space for, when parking is, unrestricted parking is allowed along the street frontage, you can count a limited number of street parking spaces towards the park, meeting the parking requirement, but it's not restricted to that site.
So that parking space may not actually be available? Okay. All right.
Correct.
Got it.
Commissioner Trejo?
No, my questions were just answered about that parking space on, on-street parking. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions at this time.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for you. This is a special use permit to subdivide a property into four condominium units, is that correct?
Correct.
And then on the next page, on the project description, the applicant proposed to demolish all structures on the site and construct two detached, two detached, two-story townhouse styles, structures that will contain two three-bedroom units.
So within both structures will be two units each?
Okay.
Two attached units.
And then on the next page, the first paragraph, the applicant is requesting the SUP approval to allow the development of three two-story residential condominium units. So are we contradicting ourselves, or am I not reading it correctly, or?
Must have been a, must have been a typo. Think on the, should have been, it's four units, so it's not three.
Okay.
Yeah, it's four units. I don't know how that slipped in there. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Answer my question. Any other question from the commissioners? Hearing none?
I just had one.
Okay, we got a question from Commissioner Rice.
When we have the site plan review, it's coming back to the planning division for review, would that be coming back to the planning department, or would we wanna get a chance to input this again?
That would be ministerial, so that would just be strictly with the planning division.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And it, it would be something we discussed as a staff, that we would also send to our architectural consultant for additional feedback.
Okay, thank you very much, good report.
Thank you.
Typo. If the applicant is here, you can give us your name and tell us about your project, and why you think we should approve this particular project.
Ladies and gentlemen, all lines are unmuted at this time. If you're on the line, please go ahead and state your name.
Is the applicant available?
Again, ladies and gentlemen, all lines are unmuted at this time, so if you are on the line, please go ahead and state your name.
At this particular point, we're looking for the applicant for this particular project. We're looking for the applicant for this project. Mr. Lewis, what do we do at this particular point when we don't have the applicant to tell us about the project? Is there any?
I would advise you to just open it now up for the public to comment.
Okay, we're gonna open it up for any comments from the public. Hold on just a minute before we do that. Not in, in favor of that, Mr. Lewis, because we don't know about the particular project. We've heard the staff give us the information on the project, but we have not heard the applicant. So the commissioners cannot actually make a rational decision on this particular project because the applicant has not actually come forward. So we're not gonna have the general public make a comment on it either at this particular point, sir.
You can, you're, you can certainly run the meeting how you want, Chairman. Are there questions from the commissioners to the applicant?
Okay, I can open it up for, are there any questions for the applicants from our commissioners? Commissioner Patrick, did you have a question for the applicant? Commissioner Rice, did you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Commissioner Trejo, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Hello? Hello, Bernard? I'm on the, I'm on the phone with them, but they're not, it's not going through. Hello?
Hello, we can hear you, go ahead, sir.
Hello?
We can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah, we, we have a little bad reception. Anyhow, yeah, this is Patrick Pernag, I'm the owner, current owner of the project.
Okay, tell us about your project, sir.
Yeah, do you have any questions for me, or?
We want you to tell us about your project, and then once you do that, then we can ask you some questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sir, I'm not sure you understand. What we're asking you to do is, we're asking you, as the applicant, to tell us, the commissioners, about your project on Stepney. Can you do that for us?
Uh, I'm gonna try. Uh, well, these are, I'm proposing to provide four new townhouses for the neighborhood. I think they're well-designed, tiny little homes, and I think they would enhance the neighborhood, the whole area, and I think it's also good for the area to have this new project. Hopefully, it also will be well-designed- good for the area to have this, uh, new project. And hopefully, it'll also be well-designed, well-designed, and also be well, um, uh, there'll be a range or at a, at a rental that would be not too high, and I think, um, there will, I think we will have some, um, happy renters or buyers who would, uh, so...
Okay, I think we got the gist of it.
Be well, well, about twice, I mean, not very high, and as I said, uh, I think it, and will also, as I say, enhance the area.
Okay, sir, thank you. We, we understand. We're gonna open up, we're gonna open it up for questions to you. We're gonna start with Commissioner Williams, because the other commissioners didn't have questions. So, Commissioner Williams, do you have a question for the applicant?
Yes, I do. I just have one question, and it's concerning, uh, the days that you are operating with regards to your construction. Will you be given notification to the neighbors in the air, in the general area, so if they have any questions or concerns, um, they're, they will be able to reach out to you, uh, with those questions and concerns, particularly with, uh, debris and other, uh, concerns that they may have?
Absolutely, yes. But we, there will be posted signs, uh, and also currently, my two neighbors on both my left and right, they have been already informed. You have my, uh, telephone number at the time. Uh, again, yes, I will be posting signs, and if you have any question, they can call me directly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're gonna, I don't think any of the other commissioners have any questions. If, am I right in saying that? Commissioner Patrick, Commissioner Rice, Commissioner Trillo? Okay, very good, sir. Thank you very much. We're gonna open it up at this time for anyone that's for or against this particular project. You may say, do so at this particular time. Just give us your name and state your reasoning.
My, my name?
No, no, sir. We've finished with you.
You have, there's a little static in the line.
Okay, we're finished with you, sir. Thank you very much. We're opening it up to the general public right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, if anyone has any questions in regards to this particular project or against it, you can do so at this time. Just give us your name. Hearing none, we're gonna close this segment, and we're going to ask for a motion on the floor, please.
I'm sorry. Um, since we've been doing this telephonically...
We have actually had the technician, I've heard the technician say, "The lines are open. You know, if you wanna say something, please say something." Would you, um, at least consider asking the technician to, uh, give his regular spiel, saying that the lines are open? I just wanna make sure that the public, uh, we know that the public has had an opportunity, and there haven't been any technical glitches.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, all lines are unmuted at this time. If you want to ask a question or add a comment, please do so at this time. State your name, and then your question or comment. Again, all lines are unmuted at this time. If you have a question or would like to add a comment, please do so at this time.
Is someone on the line that's steeding to come in? Okay, we're gonna close this segment. As for any final questions from our commissioners? Commissioner Rice?
None.
Commissioner Patrick?
None.
Commissioner Williams?
None.
Commissioner Trillo?
No questions.
Is there a motion on the floor, please?
I move that we affirm the categorical, categorical exemption EA CE 2020-014 and adopt the attached resolution approving SP 2020-05, I'm sorry, 005, subject to the sixteen conditions and/or add additional conditions as deemed appropriate.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. We'll call for any questions. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye. Ms. Wilcox?
Yes, Chairman, according to the Inglewood Municipal Code, this decision can be appealed within twenty days from the notice of planning commission action by filing a written notification to the planning division and submitting an appeal fee of five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, at which time the file will be transmitted to the city council for their consideration.
Thank you. Hey, Patrick, you have your project? Good luck to you on it. Madam Secretary, please, the next one.
Item five C, a public hearing to consider an application by Jeff Williams, representing 7-Eleven for special use permit number 2020-007 from a proposed convenience market on an approximately nine thousand eighty-three square foot C2 general commercial zone property at eight-three-seven South Prairie Avenue.
Chairman Springs and Commission, the file is present and notice has been given in the form and manner as required by law. Staff received seven, eight items of correspondence from the public, and Assistant Planner Marissa Fuel is present to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission.
Good evening.
The subject site for this SUP request is located at eight-three-seven South Prairie Avenue and has a commercial residential general plan designation with, with C2 zoning in the medical enterprise overlay zone. The site is located on the northwest corner of Prairie Avenue and Arbor Vita Street within the medical enterprise overlay zone, which requires an SUP for improvements valued over twenty thousand dollars to non-residential structures. It is next to commercial uses to the north and south, with the Hollywood Park site located across Prairie Avenue to the east, and a vacant parking lot to the west. The site is developed with an existing thirty-four-hundred-square-foot, single-tenant commercial building that was built in two thousand and four as a laundromat and is currently active as a laundromat. There is one driveway on the south side of the lot, providing access from Arbor Vita Street, and one driveway on the east side of the lot to Prairie Avenue. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing laundromat into a 7-Eleven convenience market. The majority of floor area will be used for display of everyday grocery and household items, displayed over several shelving units and wall displays. The convenience market will also provide fresh, prepared food, including sandwiches, salads, and bakery items. Beer and wine is proposed to be available to customers in a section of cooler doors located in the rear of the store. The beer and wine sales area will be within five of the proposed twelve cooler doors. The coolers containing the alcohol will be kept locked and open for customers by an employee with a key on an as-needed basis. A shelving display is also proposed to display non-refrigerated wine. Alcoholic beverages will not be displayed in any temporary locations. The proposed beer and wine sales floor area would occupy approximately thirty-five square feet, which constitutes approximately one percent of the total convenience market floor area. The hours of operation for the market will be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, with alcohol sales proposed to be limited to the hours of six AM to two AM daily. The market will have ten full-time employees and will have a minimum of three employees on-site at all times. The applicant has an existing 7-Eleven store located in the shopping center to the south of the subject site, across Arbor Vita Street. The existing store has a type-20 ABC license. This 7-Eleven store will be relocating to the new subject site, and if approved, the applicant will transfer their existing ABC license to the new location. According to ABC, three off-sale licenses are permitted within the subject site census tract without the census tract being considered over-concentrated. ABC records indicate that there are currently four active licenses within the census tract. In the subject crime reporting district, the crime rate decreased from two-hundred-and-fifteen incidents in two thousand and seventeen to two, excuse me, to one-hundred-and-seventy-six incidents in two thousand and nineteen. The subject site has maintained a low crime rate with one incident in two thousand and seventeen and eighteen, and two incidents in two thousand and nineteen. Staff also requested crime statistics for the existing 7-Eleven location. That location had one incident in two thousand and seventeen and two incidents in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. Based on the existing ABC licenses in the area, the planning commission, as part of its consideration of this SUP request, will need to make a finding whether or not the proposed license provides a public convenience or necessity to the community. The applicant has submitted their justification in regards to the PCN finding as attachment five in your report. In summary, it states that the proposed 7-Eleven with beer and wine sales will provide public convenience or necessity due to the national franchise's unique business model focused on convenience, as opposed to the big-box retailers or businesses specializing fully in alcohol sales. The applicant also states that the transfer of the existing store and alcohol license will allow them to update their store, allowing them to have more control over property maintenance while maintaining their presence in the community. If the planning commission approves the request, the applicant will be required to complete the site plan review process for the interior and exterior modifications to the building. The proposed 7-Eleven will occupy the existing full, existing footprint of the building. Pedestrian access into the market will remain unchanged with the entrance oriented towards the parking area. Fourteen on-site parking spaces will be, will be provided, which complies with IMC requirements. The applicant is proposing to install five security cameras on the interior of the store and three security cameras on the exterior. The cameras will be fisheye cameras that will have the ability to monitor all aspects of the store and subject site, including the beer and wine coolers, sales counter, entrances, back room, and parking lot. The cameras will be monitored in real time and will be shared with the Inglewood Police Department upon request. Landscaping will be enhanced along the street frontage, adjacent to the public right-of-way, and within the parking area of the subject site. Staff received seven public comments in favor and one public comment opposing this request. The proposed project is consistent with the commercial residential land use designation and is exempt from further environmental review. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you might have. The applicant is also calling in tonight to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. We're gonna open up a question, starting with Commissioner Patrick?
I have several questions, but I would like to reserve them and direct them, direct, direct them to the applicant, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
I was just curious, there's a huge lot behind the laundromat. Do you know if it's owned by the same property owner that's buying the 7-Eleven property?
It is not owned by the same owner. It's a separate owner.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trillo?
Yes, thank you. Uh, what is the beer and wine floor area in the existing store compared to what the proposed, the proposed, uh, floor area for the new store?
I believe it's the same as what they're, they're requesting right now, but I'm not certain. They will know that the owner of the existing store will be on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
I will hold mine for the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. Um, my only question is in regards to, page number three, the applicant has an existing state, the California Department of Alcohol and Beverage, and that's, where's that location? Is that another location?
It is right across the street, on the, if you can see the pink star on the screen, the existing 7-Eleven in the shopping center.
That 7-Eleven is at Prairie and...
Arbor Vita.
And the new one is going to where?
Right across the street to the north, on a separate lot.
He's moving across the street?
Yes. To a single-tenant location.
Thank you. And I drove by there and I couldn't figure it out. I, because if you go across the street, there's a laundromat. Is that the one we're going across the street to the laundromat? Is that correct? That's gonna be on the north side, northwest side.
Yes.
And they were on the south...
Southwest.
West side, correct?
The existing location, yes.
So now you're going across the street?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right. So you wanna take the beer with, and license with you, right?
Yes, they would like to transfer their license.
Okay, cool. Thank you. If the applicant is available, would you please give us your name and tell us about your project?
Yes, sure. Um, I think it's Jeff Williams. I'm the associate head of the 7-Eleven. I cover Los Angeles, Hollywood. Um, I'm joined by...
Your line is now muted.
Powell, who oversees this store and also several others in Inglewood, and the store owner, uh, for thirty-five years, Amin Badruden. So, we'll all be here to answer any questions that you have. Um, so, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, for hearing our case, having been here and spoken to you in the past. I know that you are all familiar with 7-Eleven. Um, uh, like stated before, we're simply moving from one corner to another. Um, we're not adding new store, we're not adding any license, uh, we're not changing key operations. Um, we're gonna maintain the same hours and the same amount of beer and wine space. Um, this move really allows us to have a chance to elevate our brand outside of the restrictions that typically come from being inside a shopping center. And after thirty-five years of being here, um, we're really excited and feel like we owe the community, um, you know, uh, a better match to reflect the amazing new NFL, NBA stadium that's going on up Prairie. Um, so there's really three key elements to this move. Exterior design, which we typically don't control inside a shopping center. Freestanding location allows us to do this. In this case, we're going outside what we would typically do, um, because it, it deserves to be, you know, where, where it's located. Uh, we want a cutting-edge design. Um, interior, uh, this really allows us to expand our product offers, offerings at our new platforms that only come with the new stores, um, such as our new beverage wall, um, beverage bar, cold brew, nitro pulls, new espresso machines, uh, fresh food expansion. Uh, this existing store where we're at now is too narrow, and the footprint is not configured to allow us to do this. Site management, as, uh, another three key point, uh, with the freestanding location like this, we have better control over premises. Uh, we just do not have that level of control inside a shopping center. Next, I just wanna quickly allow Jesse Powell, 7-Eleven Operations, uh, to say a few remarks.
Yes, how you doing? Um, I just wanted to let you guys know, so I'm in operations for 7-Eleven. Um, I am, uh, I think of the president, president of my entire life, but I oversee six 7-Eleven in Inglewood. So, this store in particular, um, I oversee, been overseeing for the last five years, and, uh, this project. So, um...
Who's speaking right now?
For that...
Who's speaking right now?
And with this freestanding location, 7-Eleven can enforce a lot more things for internal and, and also, uh, internal. Um, for, for community relations-wise, the current store has, um, operated by, by Amin Badruden, and, uh, has a track record, track record of, uh, partnership with the community in the city of Inglewood. So, Amin has been operating for, for six. He has ten, so has full-time employees, seven, um, from the city of Inglewood, and been there for over ten years. For community support, the franchise is... For community support, the franchise, he engages in the community, partners with the Inglewood Police Department. They, he has partnered with them for over 10 years to utilize for, almost like a hub for, in the middle of the city, I guess you could say. That is really it. I have Amin here. I'll pass it on back to Jeff, but if you guys would like to speak to the franchise operator, he is more than-
Okay, I have a question for you. Now, who's speaking right now? Is this Jeff Williams speaking?
Your line is now unmuted.
Can you hear me? Is someone there?
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Is this Jeff Williams speaking?
I'm sorry.
The connection is-
We just-
Can you repeat that, please?
We just need to know who's speaking, please.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that one more time?
Need to know your name.
Sorry, I can't understand. The connection is, we're going to call it from another line, just in case.
Just tell us who's speaking at this time. Is this Jeff Williams speaking?
This is Jeff. Yes, I'm here. Yeah, this is Jeff.
And who was the other person speaking?
So that's Jesse Powell, and he's 7-11 Field Operations. He oversees this store as well as others in Inglewood.
Okay. Madam Secretary, did you get that? Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Jeff, we're going to open it up to some questions for you to stay on the line. Commissioner Patrick, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for answering one of my questions. Why are you moving from one place directly across the street? You've answered that. What are you going to do about parking at the new location at 837 South Prairie Avenue?
What do you, what do we do about parking at that new?
Yes, the number of parking places and-
Yeah.
Access to them ingress, egress, in and out of 7-11.
So everything's going to be the same? It's existing. We're just utilizing the same parking there. Egress will stay the same.
How many parking places do you currently have?
Fourteen on the new site, ma'am. And that's more than what we typically would get at 7-11. Usually lucky to get six. So-
And Mr. Williams, you and I have talked before. How many 7-11s are there currently in Inglewood?
There are eleven.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
Hello, Mr. Williams. Hello?
Hi there.
I went to your store four times today because I was really concerned with potentially opening or advancing another 7-11 in Inglewood. But considering you've been here 35 years, it's a little bit different. I read all the letters of support as well as the community members who said they didn't want the 7-11 there, the group. It looks as if that store has a lot of potential, but it's really trapped in that shopping center where it has really limited control over being able to make improvements in that location. The footprint that I see on the new plan looks very similar to, other than it's smaller in size, to the footprint that you have, and it has a different beverage bar, very similar with reference to the beer and wine, to the footprint of the current store. Is that correct?
That is correct.
I have one major concern in that within a six-month period after, if you're approved today, once you move out of the 7-11 store, by right, another beer and wine or alcohol beverage retailer can move into that location and they won't have to come through the planning commission. And I'm going to talk with the planning department to confirm that. But at this time, I may come back, but I don't have any further questions for you. Thank you.
May I comment on that? Is he not moving that beer and wine from the location that he's in over to the new project? Is that correct, Ms. Wilcox?
That's correct. The approval that remains for six months is the city's approval. So per the code, there's a six-month window after use or non-conforming use leaves that it can still be resumed, per the city code.
Commissioner Trillo?
I actually don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Charles Williams?
I just have one question, Mr. Williams. Are the coolers typically locked at all your locations?
They definitely will be locked. Most locations do have them locked. That's just what it is. With the new stores, we can put a locking mechanism, whereas the old stores don't have that technology. So all new stores, we build that in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Your line is now muted. Your line is now unmuted.
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Williams. At this particular point, we're going to open it up for the general public to have any comments in regards to this particular project, for or against this project. Mr. Technician, can you?
Ladies and gentlemen, to add a comment, press pound two on your telephone keypad. Again, to add a comment during this section, press pound two. No comments at this time. Oh, we do have one comment. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Please give us your name.
Hello, my name is Delia and I'm a resident of- The only comment that I do have-
Your line is now muted.
Not the, well, maybe it's two. It's maybe, I do agree with the new change and the new location. I do believe it will look better for the aesthetics of that area, considering that stadium's right in front. But what I don't agree with is removing the laundromat. I lived on Arbor Vita and Oak, and they recently put a new 7-11 on Inglewood and Arbor Vita, taking away a laundromat that was there on that corner. Now, another laundromat's going to be removed from the community. Before, I was going to the laundromat on Inglewood and Arbor Vita. Now, I'm going to the laundromat off of Prairie and Arbor Vita. Now, it looks like I'm not going to be able to. I do understand there is a laundromat on the corner of Manchester and, um, Oak. But taking away from the community those laundromats, I don't agree with. That's all.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comment. Anyone else?
Your line is now unmuted.
Mr. Tech, is there anybody else on the line?
No further comments at this time.
Thank you. Okay, is there any final questions from the Commissioners? Okay. Is this question for the Commissioners or is this question for the applicant?
It's for the applicant.
Is Mr. Jeff, are you still there?
I am still here.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Williams, I know it might be difficult to say, but at any time, do you intend for both of these to be operating simultaneously? Just how do you propose to move one into the other? And how long do you think it would take?
Great question.
Your line is now muted.
If approved, and then we will move over when that is ready to open. And both are existing.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. My question is, will they be operating-
Your line is now unmuted.
Simultaneously? Did you answer that?
I'm sorry?
No, I didn't quite understand the answer.
Oh, we are not going to operate simultaneously. We are going to build out the new store if approved, and once it's ready to open, we are going to close the existing store. So they will not be operated at the same time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
And I also understand we have some supporters that are called in on the line. I don't know if they are able to get through or not, but we do have several that-
Yes, we've heard them. Thank you. Commissioner Rice?
A question for staff. I've had conversation about locks on the beer cabinets and being able to unlock them from the front counter or have a staff member from the store unlock them, but I didn't see that as one of the conditions. Is it in here and I just overlooked it? I know it's an option, but I don't think it's a condition.
Condition number 13.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trillo?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions, thank you.
I do have a question. My question is in regards to the building on the southwest side that you're going to be vacating. Are you leasing or renting that particular building? And are you going to purchase the building on the northwest side, the laundromat? Is that a purchase or is that a lease/rent option?
Yeah, so we're currently leasing. We'll be leasing on the new-
Certainly leasing on the new site, too.
I see. The only question I, or comment I want to make on that, what happens a lot of times is that we have one building that we're leasing or that we're occupying, and now we're going to vacate that building and we're going to go to another building across the street, which means now that building that you're going to vacate is going to be vacant. So that's my only, my only concern is that we end up not having an occupied building whereas we could have actually upgraded the building that we're in. The, one of the residents just made a comment in regards to taking the laundromat. The laundromat was that was once on Inglewood Avenue and Arbor Vita. Now, there's a 7-11. Now, we're going to take the laundromat on Arbor Vita and Prairie. So now that resident doesn't have a place nearby where she can go or she or the other people in the community can go. So I do have an issue with that. I think that we should have looked at the building that we're in, maybe revamped it so we won't impede on our residents and the things that need to be done in the community. That's my only comment.
Mr. Chairman? Over here. I just, these are, these are all valid comments. I just want to remind the Commission, the only thing in front of the Commission this evening is whether or not you're going to grant them the right to sell beer and wine for off-site consumption.
I understand that, Mr. Lewis. However, if they're going to sell beer and wine, they could sell beer and wine in the facility that they're in. Now, by being the Chair of this particular Commission, I have the right to make a comment in regards to what my feelings are based upon the community.
You are correct.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there any other comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we affirm the category exemption EACE 2020-044 with the consideration that this is a public convenience having the 7-11 in that community that they've been there 35 years. Relocation to one side of the street, from one side of the street to the other, based on my forward visits to the store today and periodically during the year, it's a necessity for accessibility and for them to be able to have control of that, their location and make it more, to beautify it more and make it more cohesive for the community or the environment that they're building their new store in. And I also like to adopt the attached resolution approving SP 2020-007 with 30, 30-plus-one conditions. The other condition being that item, 13 other conditions, alcoholic beverages should be sold from within five locked coolers, enclosures, and one non-refrigerated shelf. That's an open shelf that anyone can pick up wine and walk out of the store with, and I'd like to have that shelf as a locked shelf also so that all alcoholic beverages would be stored within locked cabinets.
Second.
Okay, you heard the motion? And there was a second? We call for any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll call for our vote.
Commissioner Patrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye.
Madam? Ms. Wilcox?
Yes, Chairman, according to the Inglewood Municipal Code, this decision can be appealed within 20 days from the notice of planning commission action by filing a written notification to the Planning Division and submitting an appeal fee of $529, at which time the file will be transmitted to the City Council for their consideration.
Okay. Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, I'm sorry. We want to take a five-minute break. We want to take a five-minute break. So we're going to reconvene at 8:50. 8:50.
You guys burning the midnight oil for us? Is that dimming the lights?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's beautiful at night.
Oh, it's a little dark.
So fire, I just noticed that.
Of course, you should do something about having those lights on when we're here tonight.
Oh, yeah, you know, I'll be talking, lay that over there. I guarantee you going forward, you won't have any problems with that baby. I hear they try to conserve as much money as possible.
Have you been?
Oh, yeah.
But they're really wrapping up to open, so you know, big event with all the presents.
That's the billboard.
They're trying to do a board agreement or?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the one.
That's the one that they- That's the one, uh, which one?
Hyatt House, no, Airport Park Hotel. And then it changed into the Hyatt House. It was on Ninetieth, right across the street from the Forum. It was, it was really happening. It was, it was jamming back in the day.
It was back then. It happened to several weddings and dances.
It was right, it was right on the corner of Prairie and Ninetieth, on the southeast corner. Big six-story building. And then they had a, a basement underneath. You go down there, they had a bar and this, we went to go see this guy by the name of Robin, who was a comedian. Not Robin Williams, Robin Harris. Oh, that guy was so funny. He was, he used to, if you came in late- Yeah, I'm sure I will.
The hotel?
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, I drove by there. It was a dump for a long time. I said, would you guys wanna do something with this? But you know, you're waiting for the opportune time. Well, here it is. Are you guys ready? We're three minutes over there. Mr. Jackson, you're holding on heating up.
But he just said he's ready and then he's calling. Yeah, so he just, come on, come on.
Oh, you want to say something? Okay, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. It's eight fifty-three. Madam Secretary?
Item six A, non-public hearing, to consider an application by Brian Massey representing Hillcrest Ventures LLC for design review number two zero two zero dash zero zero three, DR 2020 003, to allow exterior improvements to an existing six-story medical office building that will be converted into a mixed-use development that includes sixty-five residential units on an approximately twenty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-three square foot property at three three six Hillcrest Boulevard. The file is present and notice has been given in the form and manner as required by law. Staff perceive no correspondence from the public and Planner Bernard McCrumby is present to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. The subject site is zoned HC and is surrounded by commercial uses. The property was constructed in nineteen sixty-four as a six-story medical office building with commercial space on the ground floor. The subject site is twenty-three thousand eight hundred thirty-three square feet and is located on the southern corner of Hillcrest and Nutwood with an alley located southeast of the property. The existing office building facade features recessed windows and columns that span the front of the building on the first floor as shown on this existing photo. The proposed mixed-use development will provide two primary pedestrian entrances for the building located along Nutwood and Hillcrest. Vehicular access to the building will be via an existing driveway on Hillcrest and vehicles will exit via an existing driveway that outlets to the alley at the rear of the building. As a part of the adaptive reuse for the site, the applicant proposes a ground floor lobby area that will serve as the primary entrance for the residents as well as a restaurant area. It should be noted that the tenants have not been finalized for the restaurant and retail area that will be located on the first floor. The second and third floors will provide the parking that's required for the mixed-use development, which is ninety parking spaces. The fourth floor will provide eighteen studio units that range between five hundred to eight hundred square feet in size. And the fourth floor will also provide, as you can see here on the screen, a outdoor terrace that's complete with the pool and snack area, along with the fitness center that will serve, that will both serve as residential amenities and common open space for the residents. The terrace will be located on the southwest side of the building and will not be visible from Hillcrest. The terrace will be landscaped with a variety of small plants and trees and accents that access the interior, the exterior improvements. The fifth and sixth floors will provide the additional or remaining units, including two penthouse units, loft units, that will be located on the sixth floor. The unit sizes for the fifth and sixth floor will range anywhere between five hundred and twenty-three square feet up to one thousand and seventy-nine square feet. The applicant proposes, the applicant proposes to improve the exterior northeast, northwest, and southeast-facing facades by installing a new storefront glass curtain wall facade. Above the first floor will provide metal screens that will screen the parking area and add additional architectural interest and articulation. The glass curtain wall will continue from the fourth floor to the sixth floor. I would also like to note that as you're reviewing this design review, there is a billboard that's shown on the elevation. Please be advised that this is a separate matter that's under negotiation with the city's administration and is not subject to the design review proposal or approval. As mentioned earlier, the project requires ninety parking spaces and the proposed development will meet the required ninety parking space requirement per the IMC. The existing medical office building does not have any onsite security or security cameras. However, the proposed building will provide twenty-four-hour onsite security and interior and exterior cameras. If the Planning Commission decides to, to approve the request, the applicant is required to submit for site plan review where we would, where the, the project would be vetted with all applicable agencies and the Planning Division for code compliance. Our staff has determined that the proposed development meets the intent of the downtown TOD and findings have been made and are included in your staff report and resolution in accord, that the project is, is in accordance with the design review standards. The site and proposed improvements are compatible with the existing uses along Hillcrest and Nutwood and the downtown, and the downtown land use designation of the IMC. This concludes staff's presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, thank you. Start off with Commissioner Williams.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Trejo?
What is the, what is the, are we approving the, the project or are we just, are we just doing a design review for exterior improvements?
That's what you're approving, the exterior design of the building.
We're not approving a project.
Not the use.
It's just the exterior design.
Correct.
Okay.
Minus the billboard.
Uh, minus billboard.
Correct.
And we don't have any additional renderings besides this one that kind of shows a faraway look?
Uh, have the-
For the lower, well, besides those, you can't even read those.
This here is the, a more close, a closer version of the rendering.
Okay, so we don't know what the storefronts will look like on the first floor?
I do not have a closer, a closer version of what, what that, that would, would look like.
Cause the, the renderings of the plans that were, were part of the project, even my, I couldn't even read it with my, with my magnifying glasses. You know, that's, that's really unacceptable. I'm just gonna be right out front right now. That is unacceptable. You can't read it. You can't see what it is. But that was my question. I just want to confirm that what we're approving then would be the exterior improvements.
So just where, where the, the size of the plans were just too small? Okay.
You can't read, well, at least the print. You can't read the print at all, at all, at all. Again, even with the magnifying glass, I couldn't.
I'll note that.
Commissioner Rice? No questions. Commissioner Patrick?
No questions.
I just want to make a comment in regards to the, the fonts of it. You know, I couldn't read it either. So we want to approve something, but you know, we want to make sure that we have clarity on what we're going to approve. So we want to make sure that we're reading it correctly. When, when you're twenty years old, you can look at little print, but when you become twenty-five, it's gonna be kind of difficult. You understand?
We're thirty-five.
We have a lot of twenty-five-year-olds up here.
Yes, we have a lot of twenty-five-year-olds up here, so it's gonna be kind of difficult for us to read these fonts.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So I have no other questions. It is not a public hearing, so we can't open it up. So we have to approve this?
I believe the applicant is available if you have any questions for them.
Is the applicant twenty years old too?
Almost.
Almost. I just want to show you something here, Bernard, if you could just take a look at this. If you could take a look at this right here? And you tell me what you think.
He's showing, he's looking at this. Nandi.
Yeah. And I use it many different ways.
Yes.
Or make it in crayon or something here. Okay, very good. Is the applicant available?
Yes, the applicant's available.
Please give us your name until it's brought to the floor, please.
My name is Tima Bell. Uh, I'm the architect. And, and Massey is here as well. Hello, I'm- First of all, as the architect, I'd like to apologize for the font size. Apparently it didn't scale properly when reduced to the folder or the files that you're looking at.
Your line is now muted.
Would you like us to introduce the project?
Your line is now unmuted.
Commissioner Patrick?
I have no questions, that's fine. They can introduce the project.
Okay. Commissioner Rice? Commissioner-
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
Okay. We have no questions for you on this particular project. Thank you very much. Is there anyone on the line? We don't have to do that for you. Okay, so is there any other final questions? No questions? Is there a motion to approve this? I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, we're gonna open it up for our final questions from the commissioners. We're gonna start off with Commissioner Patrick.
I know we're planning just a design, but what's going to be on the lower level, on the ground level?
There's gonna be a mix between retail and restaurant uses. And so the idea was that they're gonna have a rest, kind of a high-end cafe where they have restaurants and, and come in and do different types of, kind of pop-up sort of restaurants. They're also looking to provide uses similar to a flower shop, newsstand, and things like that. So it would also serve as additional amenities for the public as well as for the residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Rice?
Just so you have a full quorum with reference to the font sizes, I'm definitely complaining about that also, so hopefully we can get the eleven by seventeen. I'm concerned a bit more with, this is the image that you want us to vote on because this is basically of everything you have, the best that we can see. But then at the same time, you're saying this is not- But then, at the same time, you're saying this is not the image that we're voting on, because you take this away and take that away. Why not just give us the image, not allow someone to submit an image that's not going to be a true facsimile of what their building's going to look like? Because when you put a whole quarter of it around with billboards, that's, that's not what we're voting on.
Understood. Let me, let me provide you with an elevation that, that would provide a better perspective of that second and third floor screening. So if you look here on this elevation, on the second and third level, there's some mesh, some metal mesh screening, kind of a decorative screening that will screen the cars that are parked in the garage, and so this would be the screening that would be behind the billboard.
Well, we're not going to, we're not voting on a billboard, so we're voting to approve this here.
That's correct.
This is what's going to be around the entire carport area.
That's correct.
And if the design changes and something else is approved, we go over that?
If, if the design...
Does it come back to us?
If the design changes and there is something else, an alternative to that, then we would have to come back for your approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I also would, would like to note, as mentioned in the previous project, as a part of this review prior to us coming to design review, we did also vet this project as well with our architectural design consultant for some additional feedback in regards to the proposed screening and any other architectural features that could complement the design.
Very good. Commissioner Trejo?
If the negotiations with the city on that billboard are successful, will they come back to show us that and say, okay, we, we got the billboard, and this is what the final rendering should look like?
Well, the billboard is not under design review consideration, so then at that point, they would not be required to come back. The billboard is a separate approval process that goes directly through negotiation process with the, with the city's administration department, and so that's, that's where that's handled specifically.
So if it's approved, doesn't, and, and it goes up, doesn't it affect the design? I would think so. Because you just said that, let's not look at, at the part that shows the billboard, because we're really only looking at this.
Yeah.
But if it's approved, doesn't it affect the design, or am I missing something?
Well, the...
I would just like to add, per the code, it is only subject to the agreement through city administration and city council, not subject to design reveal.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Williams?
No questions.
Do you have another question, Commissioner Rice?
No, I'm just concerned, do we add any other hypothetical scenarios that can come up with the exterior that we did not approve that won't have to come back, that we might see come into this design that won't have to come back to us for review?
At this, at this juncture, the only thing that would have to come back is if, for whatever reason, the billboard wasn't approved, or there was some significant modification to what you're, what you're seeing here. All right, thank you.
Okay, so we've answered all our questions, so is there a motion on the floor, please?
I move that we affirm the categorical exemption EACE 2020-041 and adopt the attached resolution approving DR 2020-003, subject to the nine conditions.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. We call for any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll call for our vote.
Commissioner Patrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye.
Yes, Chairman, according, according to the Inglewood Municipal Code, this decision can be appealed by the applicant within 10 days from the notice of planning commission action by filing a written notification to the planning division and submitting an appeal fee of $370, at which time the file will be transmitted to the city council for their consideration.
Okay, we're getting there. Item Secretary?
Item 6B, a non-public hearing to consider an application by Link Core Fairview Metro LP for planning commission review number 2020001, PCR 202001, to approve the public art plan for installation of onsite artwork related to construction of a new two-story mixed-use building of 101 residential units, commercial retail spaces, and associated parking spaces on an MU3 mixed-use three-zone property at 923 East Redondo Boulevard.
Chairman Springs in commission, the file is present, and notice has been given in the form and manner as required by law. Staff receive no correspondence from the public on this item, and Planner Arturo Salazar is present to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the commission. On September 5th, 2018, the planning commission approved design review 2018-001 to allow a mixed-use development consisting of 101 residential units, 5,000-square-foot commercial retail space with 114 parking spaces. On July 22nd, 2020, the project's proposed public art was considered and recommended for approval by the Arts Commission. The property is bounded by Redondo Boulevard to the south, an alley to the north, High Street to the west, and Long Street to the east. Properties to the south, west, and east of the project site are zoned MU3 and developed with commercial uses. The Crenshaw LAX Light Rail and Fairview Heights Station under construction are located south of the subject site. The properties to the north of the project are zoned R2A and are developed with residential The proposed artwork, Rise Above, is painted, is a painted mural that is four stories tall, with a footprint spanning the width and breadth of three walls of the residential tower and building. The proposed artwork will be located on the east tower and interior courtyards of the mixed-use building. The mural is a visual collage of California poppies, clouds on a field of green leaves, and a diverse group of intertwined forearms and hands joined together in a symbolic gesture of unity as they reach towards the sky. An embodiment of hope, resilience, and love, the hands aspire for something greater than their own individuality. The joining of the hands directly depicts strength and togetherness, diversity, and inclusion, as well as solidarity and strength. The artwork serves as an inspirational landmark for the growing community of the city. The public artwork is placed outside of the vehicle travel lanes, thereby maintaining vehicular circulation. Additionally, the mural will not obstruct walkways and pathways, therefore, it will maintain pedestrian circulation. The proposed location of the public artwork is in an area where it can be viewed unobstructed onsite from the interior courtyard, from the street, by car, train, and foot, and other outdoor gathering spaces at all times. Staff has made a determination that the artwork meets all IMC requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. The applicant is available for questions, and the director of Parks and Recreation is also available for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Art. Commissioner Patrick?
Yes, we're just approving the public art plan for installation on the, that's it.
That's correct.
I have no questions, thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
I have no questions, nice job, Art.
Commissioner Trejo?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No questions, thank you.
I have no questions. The applicant is available, please tell us about your, your artwork.
Yes, we're very proud to present our...
Can you, can you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you give us your name?
Yes, this is Denise Petruilis with Link Housing.
Thank you.
Yes, we, we're here to present a public art plan for...
Your line is now muted.
Many months worth of work on the team, and we're proud to present it, as it represents our mission of unity and optimism, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay.
Your line is now unmuted.
Commissioner Patrick?
The artist, what's the artist's name of your artwork? Who's the artist?
Working with two artists, Yana and Denise.
Commissioner Rice?
No questions.
Commissioner Trejo?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No questions.
I have no questions either. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
She said she's working with two artists, but I didn't hear their names.
Okay, can you give us the artist's names that you have there, please? I'm sorry.
Yes, Ryan Yano Sarfati and Eric Zui Scottness.
Did you hear that?
They're well-known, uh, artists, uh, like, artists of the world, and of work, like, this, this work also is of reality.
Okay, thank you. I think...
Chairman, I was just going to ask Arturo to provide those names.
Sure. One of the, the artist's name is Ryan Yano Sarfati and Eric Zui Scottness.
Thank you.
Known as Yano and Zui.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no further questions for you, thank you very much. If there's no other questions, is there a motion on the floor, please?
I move that we approve the public art plan for installation on onsite artwork of the review 2020-001, PCR 2020-001.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Call for any questions on the motion? Hearing none, we'll call for our vote.
Who gave the second, please? Thank you.
It was Commissioner Rice.
Commissioner Patrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye.
Okay, it's beautiful artwork, and I'm sure we'll be able to see it once it's completed. Beautiful art.
And Chairman, according to the Inglewood Municipal Code, this decision can be appealed
by the applicant within 10 days from the notice of planning commission action by filing a written notification to the planning division, at which time the file will be transmitted to the city council for their consideration.
Thank you. So they save the best for last, is that what happens with the USC grant?
Item 6C, cosmetology school overview.
Chairman Springs in commission, the file is present, and notice has been given in the form and manner as required by law. Staff receive no correspondence from the public on this item, and assistant planner Taylor Kay is present to do a short staff presentation.
Good evening, Chairman Springs and members of the planning commission. Recently, the planning commission requested that staff review and consider the regulations governing cosmetology schools throughout the city. Cosmetology schools can provide education in the areas of barbering, cosmetology, aesthetics, electrology, and manicuring. The schools are allowed in commercial and industrial zones, subject to an SUP, with a comprehensive list provided on the screen. The concern is that certain conditions of approval are preventing cosmetology schools from operating according to standard conventions of the industry. Current conditions of approval prohibit schools from operating a barber shop, beauty salon, or similar use, require schools to be close to the public, and prohibit schools from charging fees. Code amendments in the early 2000s imposed additional restrictions on salons and barber shops out of concern for their impact on economic diversity and parking demand. Thus, the aforementioned conditions of approval for schools were established to ensure a school could not also operate as a personal care services establishment without being subject to applicable IMC requirements. Applicants have expressed that the city's cosmetology school regulations are counterintuitive to student learning outcomes. The regulations limit students' exposure to the business side of the industry and ability to obtain hands-on experience working with clients. They also impose upon the ability of schools to complete, sorry, compete economically with schools in other jurisdictions that do provide their students with these opportunities. And finally, they limit a source of revenue that schools rely on for overhead costs and/or for reducing student tuition costs. As a point of reference, staff investigated how cosmetology schools are established and operated. Schools may or may not choose to obtain accreditation, but are required to obtain approvals to operate and to provide the state-required curriculum. Once a school is approved, students are required to complete, complete a certain number of hours in technical and practical training in order to be eligible for state examinations for licensure. Hours are more heavily weighted toward practical training and can be performed on mannequins or clients. Without adjustments to cosmetology school regulations, these uses may choose to locate in surrounding jurisdictions. Based on staff's review and analysis of operational needs and industry best practices, staff requests direction from the planning commission on modifying cosmetology school regulations. Certain adjustments to cosmetology school regulations should be considered, such as eliminating the prohibition on beauty and barber shop functions, eliminating the prohibition on fees for service, requiring oversight agency approval, and implementing a distance requirement for cosmetology schools. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions the commission might have.
Thank you. Commissioner Patrick?
I've gone to several cosmetology schools. I read this, I didn't know there was so much involved. Thank you, good presentation. I have no questions.
Commissioner Rice?
Very thorough, Taylor, thank you very much. No questions.
Commissioner Trejo?
I have a couple of questions. If we eliminate the prohibition... I'm sorry, you can hear it. So if we eliminate the prohibition on the beauty and barber school functions, does it then become a school and a beauty parlor or a beauty barber shop? That's one question.
Okay.
And if we implement the distance requirement, the distance requirement would be from schools, from cosmetology schools, or from beauty salons, and/or beauty salons?
Okay, so for the first question, that's something that's up for consideration. So these are all just potential options, and you all are welcome to present additional ones as well. But essentially, if we remove the restriction that's currently in place regarding beauty and barber shop functions, then, yes, it can operate in that form and manner with the understanding of clientele that is a school that you're coming to, and it's not a shop. So this isn't a licensed professional yet. You are coming to get your hair done, or your nails done, or... You are coming to get your hair done or your nails done or whatever, or, um, any type of aesthetic services from someone who is in training. And then the distance requirement, um, as it was mentioned in the report, was regarding distance from cosmetology schools, but it could also be posed as from any other use that's considered similar, if the commission wanted to make that decision.
Okay, that's my question out.
So you're not making a decision tonight per se, but this is an overview report of the concern and the issues on both sides in order for us to get marching orders on how to proceed with cosmetology school regulations.
Okay. Do we wait for all commissioners to make comments and then?
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No questions at this time.
Okay, so we're gonna, at this time, we're gonna open up for final questions? Do you have a final question? Commissioner Trejo?
Well, uh, those are my two main questions. I think, personally, I think that, that once you eliminate, let's see, eliminate prohibition. Once you, well, let me put it this way, once you allow them to operate, even though it's a school, but you're allowing them to operate as a beauty and barber shop, then you have to look at it like that. So when it comes to implementing the distance requirement for the cosmetology schools, and I think it would be the same that we have now, that 300-foot requirement that they have to come to the commission, uh, for an SUP. And or, and basically to, it, it have the same requirements that we have now for a beauty school and a barber shop. Excuse me, a beauty salon and a barber shop and all related under that nail salon and all of that. That's, that's how I feel about it. Cause I don't think, cause if you don't do that, then you give them, you give the schools, uh, almost an advantage of being able to locate in a location that may have, uh, other beauty salons there.
Okay, that's been noted.
And, um, Commissioner, one thing I would just like to note, a beauty school is considered a trade school under our code, so it's automatically subject to a special use permit. And, um, in regards to existing salon regulations, um, the complexity is that within the downtown area, new salons are prohibited. Outside of that area, it's subject to the 300-foot rule or a special use permit, so, which is why some suggestions have been made that would, um, better ensure that the operation was a school use and not a professional salon use. So just wanted to add that.
Mr. Chairman, may I make some other comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, that if it's not considered, if it is only still considered just a school, then they have the advantage of being able to locate in the downtown, in the downtown area where they're prohibited, right? If it's only considered a school, yet it's allowed to have beauty salon and related, uh, functions.
So right...
So it gives it the advantage of being able to locate in the downtown area where, where, uh, if it was considered a school, it would not be allowed to go into the downtown area.
So right now, we have, uh, ads in, in the, the first table that's in the report. There's one existing school and it is in the downtown area. And then, um, previously, um, uh, we received another application for a school in the downtown area and that school has, that application has since expired because of these regulations.
And there are a number of beauty salons and related, uh, establishments in the downtown area. That's my whole thing that I've been just talking about in previous meetings we had. If it's only a school, that a school, if it's only considered a school, then a school would be allowed in the downtown area where there's already a whole bunch of, uh, beauty salons and related in the downtown area. So it gives it, in my opinion, it gives it an advantage of being able to locate where, uh, a beauty salon, I'm sure would not be allowed because there's already so many in the downtown area, where according to our plan, we wouldn't allow them anyway.
Okay, so for clarification, you are indicating that you, your preference, uh, would be along, more along the lines of schools would also be prohibited downtown, so that they would be like-for-like, subject to the same requirement as a beauty salon, barber shop, nail salon, nail salon, so on and so forth.
Well, that's how I analyze it. I think that if you, uh, if you, um, allow them to do, uh, beauty salon functions, then it becomes a beauty salon. Well, no, they will be allowed to have payment, although not as high as in another, uh, according to the report, right? That they would, um, uh, they would pay for these services, but a much lower rate. So, I mean, that's part of it too, that there's payment there, not as high as if you were somewhere else because, as you said, we don't really have a professional, but you have, you have the functions of a beauty salon. And I think it should be considered, uh, beauty school slash beauty salon. It has to be considered that way.
You understand that, Ms. Taylor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good.
And Chairman and Commission, um, just would like to note, um, what staff would appreciate if, and we appreciate all the feedback, if at the end, if the commission could make a motion to direct staff to return with a code amendment, or, you know, whatever the commission decides, um, yes or no on, uh, that would be appreciated.
Okay, very good. So you heard the finding, you wanna make a motion on that?
May I make those?
Well, uh, let me just clarify in my mind what you need from, from the commission or in the motion. You want a motion to, to say staff look at, uh... Thank you. Look at revising the, the IMC to, um, identify, uh, trade schools and beauty, and beauty, uh, beauty schools as beauty salons also. Words to that effect, is that what you're looking for?
Um, I would just like to clarify that the, the conditions that have been applied in the past have been applied because of the connection or the similarities between the, between salons and the beauty schools. The conditions have been applied to beauty schools in the downtown because salons are prohibited in the downtown. So the condition was intended to ensure there is no crossover there. Um, and so what we're presenting now is a relook at that condition and the results of its impact on the operations of beauty schools and their ability to, um, operate on par with other beauty schools in other surrounding jurisdictions. So the conditions that have been applied in, in the past by the commission have been intended to ensure that a beauty school could not inadvertently operate as a professional salon already. So the direction we'd be looking for is direction from the commission to change the conditions we're applying to allow more, um, customer access and services in the beauty schools, should the commission choose to go in that direction.
Okay, I, I do understand. So we, we have to define our motion to indicate, um, certain ramifications on a beauty school and/or beauty salons.
Excuse me, Chairman. I didn't have a lot of comments, but after hearing some of the comments, um, I have some, I have some comments and I'd like to speak when I have an opportunity, please.
Okay, before you do that, Commissioner Trejo, are you going, you, you have any further questions on this? Not sort of, but not really, but not right now?
Well, uh, you're asking for, uh, for a motion that would change the, uh, that would modify the existing, um, the existing, uh, code to allow trade schools, to allow trade schools in the downtown area, right? And at the same time eliminating, uh, their, eliminating the prohibition on doing beauty salon functions, right?
Um, just wanna clarify, we'd be looking for a motion for a direction from the city, from the Planning Commission to return with a code amendment for your consideration, not the actual code amendment, just direction for staff to prepare for your consideration, a code amendment, um, with whatever general changes you have in mind.
Well, I don't want any code amendment.
Okay, we're gonna, maybe...
So then I'm not gonna make the motion.
Okay, well, m- mister, Commissioner Rice, you may have some thoughts on this, so, let's hear what your thoughts are, so we can, someone can make a motion.
I've been in this salon business for 27 years as a salon owner. I have, um, three salons. None of them are threatened by a cosmetology school. We bring in our recruits from cosmetology schools. We need them to be successful in order to have people to come in and rent our spaces, in order for, to have employees. I have 72 employees. Where would I get them from if we don't have a successful cosmetology school producing them? This is vocational training. This is not a salon or a barber shop. Of all the revenue and make, I knew it's pennies that comes into a school for services, 50% of that goes towards that student's $16,000 tuition. That if they finish out their two years and they don't have that money to pay off their tuition, they can't even get their certificate from the school to go and take their exam at the State Board of Cosmetology. The school is gonna hold them hostage and say, when you get that other 10 grand, come see us. After two years of training, we did nothing to waste their time. This is a way to help them get that tuition paid for. After their training, in most cases, they're able to walk out of the school, it's a wash. They've worked off their training services in trade. Vocational training and salon and barber shop are apples and oranges. They don't compete with one another. I can careless a beauty school open right next door to me. I would encourage it because they, it's a feeder for the salon industry. Most folks here don't go to cosmetology schools to let people practice on them. You, no, no more would, you go to a plum, you know, plumbing school to get some of the practice on your plumbing, or practice on your electrical, or practice on your car. You're gonna go to a professional. There's a special clientele that's needed for that cosmetology industry, uh, automobile industry, electrical industry, to, that, that, that would let you go in and practice to hone your skill, to be proficient. We got a one-stop center across the street here with thousands and thousands of kids that are going over there and getting a game played with them because they don't have experience. Try, do this, do this, study this, study this. We're gonna get you in the union, talk to the union reps, and, uh, we're trying to work it out for you. You'll have, you'll have 10,000 go in and, and 500 will get job, will get placement.
I can see your passion there, Commissioner Rice. I can, I can feel your passion.
It's, it's, it, either you meet this student after school, after he's proficient at a service, trained, working on a job site, making income for his family.
Okay, Ms...
Or you meet him on the street corner or on the alley, being unsuccessful.
I'm gonna have to interrupt you. We feel your passion, we understand. So at this particular point, I think all the commissioners understand what we're up against. Am I correct in saying that? Commissioner Patrick, Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Trejo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rice, you're the man, so I need you to make a motion for it.
I make a motion that we help these kids, or these kids don't hurt us.
That's not the motion, sir.
That's, that's where it's going though. I'm making a motion that we make the cosmetology schools separate from barber shops, beauty shops, nail shops. These are vocational training facilities and they should be separate, not under the, the rules of a barber shop or, or, or a, 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 uh, beauty shop or a nail salon.
Okay, so is that the code on here, is that the code on here, um, that you said, let me read that. You just said something, but you didn't quote it correctly. Am I correct in saying that? Was it quoted correctly, your, your motion?
Um, if I can request, um, just a clarification, that the motion be for a code amendment or other, um, regulatory adjustments that, that may be needed for what you're describing, Commissioner Rice, in terms of allowing cosmetology schools to provide services to the public as part of their training.
Okay, so you wanna restate the motion?
I wanna make a motion that we allow them to provide services to the community, regulated based on their vocational, um, specifications only for whatever particular, the reason I'm going this way is because there's more than just a cosmetology school.
Okay, we understand.
But on cosmo, since we're on cosmetology...
Mr. Rice, hold on, sir.
Regulate them based on their particular specifications for their training.
Commissioner Rice, what we're trying to do, we understand, we got you, I understand. We have to make a motion, so it's clear, so we can move forward. Mr. Jackson?
I just wanna provide some clarity. We are not arguing over the change. All you're doing is directing staff to do the appropriate background to return back to you with code amendments related to, uh, cosmetology schools. That's it. That's all you're doing. When you come back, then you're gonna have your heated exchange over the details. That's when that occurs. Right now, it's just directing staff to do it. That's it. So your motion should be directing staff to consider...
First motion is to direct staff to give the Planning Commission an opportunity to vote to have cosmetology schools to charge fees directly to the clients, for the benefit of the students.
Our second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. There is no questions, correct? Now call for a question. Hearing done, we'll call for a vote.
Commissioner Patrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Rice?
Aye.
Commissioner Trejo?
No.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
Aye.
Chairman Springs?
Aye.
No appeal process.
No appeal process. No other comments on this, please. Okay. We're gonna go with, um, Commissioners' initiatives. We'll start off with Commissioner Patrick.
I would just like to compliment our city on being so aware of the COVID-19 dilemma that we're facing and taking such great pains to make sure that we're abiding by all of the CDC laws. Thank you.
Commissioner Rice?
No initiatives, thank you.
Commissioner Trejo?
I'd like a little more time to finish my thoughts.
Yes, I'd like to ask if we can get an update on the permit parking program that I understand is going to be implemented throughout the city. But, uh, basically, what's the status on it? I don't know if, you know, you can bring in a staff member from the department that handles it, but I would like to hear about it.
Yes, we can, that's being handled by the Public Works Department and, um, we can facilitate an update.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Shaw Williams?
No comments on the Commissioner's initiative.
Okay, I, I'm gonna close it with a couple of things. I wanna thank, um, Ms. Wilcox and Mr. Jackson for actually helping us to receive our badges again. So I wanna give them a shout-out because they, they helped us get our badges, so we won't be delayed on coming into the, into the city. So thank you, Mr. Jackson and Ms. Wilcox for that. I, I wanna thank the, the mayor on, uh, job well done throughout the entire city. I'm asking that each and every one of us, uh, be safe, do our, our distancing, our six-feet distancing. And I wanna close our meeting with a gentleman by the name of Congressman Lewis, who was very instrumental in the... very instrumental in the voter registration or our voters' rights. And if you look at what's happening today, a lot of those rights are given up to us again. So we really have to concentrate on the things that need to be done. So if you look at, if you look at Congressman Lewis and the things that he had done, and what's happening now, and our leadership that we're having now, and how they're trying to change that again, it's appalling of our administration, absolutely appalling. And I can't imagine anybody not understanding how it is not important for us to go out and vote, and how it's trying to be, people are being denied of those rights, and how Congressman Lewis fought for those rights. So I just want to close our meeting in dedication to Mr. John Lewis. Our meeting is adjourned, thank you.